Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the February 13th, 2025, meeting of the Penfield Planning Board. We will begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thanks, everyone, for coming. Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Hetzke?
Hetzke here.
Aiken?
Aiken here.
Burton?
Burton here.
Canower?
Canower here.
Tidings?
Tidings, sure.
Sangster?
Sangster here.
Wyshar?
Wyshar here.
O'Connor?
O'Connor here.
Prinzing?
Prinzing here.
Farigno here.
Okay, we have minutes from the January 9th meeting. Hopefully, everyone's had an opportunity to review them. And can I entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second.
I think she's got you. I think she beat you.
That's fine.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Canower?
Canower, aye.
Tidings?
No man slowing down is...
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
Get some more exercise or something. Just so everyone knows, we have two items on our public hearing agenda tonight. We have a sketch plan and preliminary final. And typically, between 6:30 and 7 o'clock, we handle our tabled items in a work session format, and then at 7 o'clock, move into the public hearing. If we get done with our tabled items ahead of 7 o'clock, we will move immediately into the public hearing. And if we don't finish by 7, we'll stop that, pause, and move into the public hearing. So with that said, Doug, would you please go down our tabled items?
All right, we only have one tabled item. It is the Chick-fil-A project at 2051 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road. We have spoken with the applicant. They've requested to remain tabled. They'd still like a little bit more time to respond to the two boards, you guys and the zoning board. We expect them to be back in the near future, though.
Okay.
So no actions necessary at this time.
All right, so we will continue tabling that. And that is our only tabled item on the agenda. So guess what? What I just said is coming true, and we will move immediately into the public hearing portion of the evening, beginning with our sketch plan. And Doug, if you'd like to read that?
All right, sketch plan review one. LaBella Associates, 300 State Street, Suite 201, Rochester, New York, 14614. On behalf of Rochester Gas and Electric Corporation, requests an informal discussion before the board with a proposed architectural design for the expansion of an existing electrical substation on 0.65 acres at 2055 Empire Boulevard. The properties now are formerly owned by Rochester Gas and Electric Corporation and Zoned Limited Business LB, application 25P-0003, SBL 093.07-2-38.
Okay. Welcome.
Hello.
Hello.
Mary Stubline with LaBella Associates, and I have here with me Kyle Duck.
Kyle Duck, Rochester Gas and Electric Projects.
And?
And Eric Thorne, Rochester Gas and Electric Permitting Manager.
Okay. Just wanted to start off with a recap, if that makes sense for the board, since not everybody has been at every meeting where we've appeared. So Argenee looked at a different location on Seaberry Boulevard. I don't know if you recall that. And at the suggestion of the planning board and zoning board, moved the proposed location of Station 55 to 2055 Empire Boulevard. We first met with this board about that location in December of 2023, where we had provided a plan that showed five separate modular metal-clad buildings with a chain-link fence around and no landscaping provided at that time for security purposes. Based on our interpretation of the town's feedback at that time, we then updated renderings for a meeting in June of 2024, where the buildings were consolidated into, the five separate buildings were consolidated into what looked like a single building, made some facade changes to add stone on the lower portion of the building, enclosed the stairs, changed up the fence on the road frontage, so instead of the chain-link fence, it was the high-security steel palisade fence. And the transformer walls were shown with varying stone patterns. Again, following feedback that we were provided at that time, updated the renderings. In October of 2024, we came back to this board to show modified exterior materials and a different overall color palette that was maybe more in keeping with the commercial look of this corridor. And all of the fence lines at that time were changed to that security steel palisade fence. So that brings us to this meeting, where we have, again, provided some new renderings for your consideration. Modifications at this time include low-profile vegetation that will help provide screening around the exterior of the lot and helps to break up that fence line with varying heights of vegetation. And these lower-growing shrubs allow us to both meet the requirement for screening but also help prevent the ability of people to climb up vegetation and get over the fence. We have also, at this time, provided three roof lines for consideration, and these roof lines should provide some additional architectural interest, again, to better blend in with that commercial corridor. And we have looked at scaling the transformer wall so it was a more appropriate height, reflecting the true height. And we did not propose any modifications to the materials at this time. We feel that's something that can continue to be worked out, but we do think that what we're showing still is in keeping with the commercial look of this area. I guess that's my recap.
Okay. Okay, so you're open for questions now, at this point? All right. Thank you. And I will say, I appreciate the efforts that you are making. I fully understand that this is a necessary, probably increasingly urgent thing to get accomplished. The, and I think, if I am correct, tonight, you're presenting this to look for direction on how the board feels about these changes, is that correct?
That's correct.
So that you can essentially move forward into preliminary and final?
Yes.
I think that there definitely is forward progress. At this point, I'm somewhat inclined, we have an architectural consultant, and I think it probably is appropriate to have him just take a look and submit his comments on this. And at that, I guess I'd like to open it up for other board members' comments as well, if anyone has any.
I do. Can you point out the differences between the three concepts? Because I'm having a little bit of a hard time figuring that out.
So it's really...
Thank you. That's, I appreciate that.
Sorry, and I skipped over that while I was...
No, it's okay.
The first option has more of a trapezoidal roof overhang, kind of more like a hotel canopy, that kind of look.
That's good, Matt. I like how you zoomed in. That's good.
The second option has more of a pointed roof accent in the middle. I don't know what it might look like. I don't know what it might look like.
Like a wood block triangle, like sitting on top of the middle of the roof, kinda?
And the third option has a gable on both of the short ends to kind of mimic the appearance of a full roof peak. I think, as we've mentioned before, we can't enclose the roof over top because it has to be able to dissipate heat.
So on option three here, that, so the angle of the roof, would that be consistent all the way across the front? It looks almost as though there's, let's call it, four shallow peaks?
There is.
In the middle of the ends, in the middle of the long part?
Yes, yes. So there's a, there's a short gable on the short sides, and then a longer, shallow gable on the longer sides, just to provide some definition between the sides. And, you know, as Mary stated, the, the flat roofs of each of these buildings on the interior is intentional, as it, you know, helps with the loading on the buildings, as well as to dissipate heat through there. But our, our design was, our design idea was to give the look of a sort of full, full peak within the roof line.
So the average person driving down Empire Boulevard, either northeast or southwest, looking at the building, will they see faux-design type appear? Will it be obvious that it's just there for decoration, or will it appear as if it's a full, real roof?
The idea is to make it appear as a, as a full roof. You know, once we sort of move, move forward in the preliminary final process and advance the design schematics, you know, we'll, we'll look to kind of work out those details of the attachments to the roofs. But, you know, from a conceptual standpoint, this is, these are some options that we've reviewed as, as potential design aspects that we can incorporate. And then we'll sort of work out the, through additional renders and such, more, you know, an advanced look of what these would look like.
Do you mind if I ask, in the rendering, what the camera height was set at for the rendering, at least for like this view?
I don't have that information. Do you happen to know, Mary?
I don't know if that's applicable to this situation, because we're not photorealistic.
I know, I was just trying to give the idea of like, if, if the camera set, camera is set at like six or eight feet, that's higher than, you know, anybody's going to be driving by in their vehicle, unless you've got one heck of a lifted truck. So to give a perspective of what you're seeing at the vehicle level, or potentially at the eye level, as you're walking, as opposed to some of the higher views, which do appear to show, I mean, you could see sort of the, the flat, open roof area, but nobody's going to be up at that height unless you're flying over it in a plane or something like that.
That is correct. The, you can see the view presented, presented here on the screen is intended to be sort of from roadside, but we also wanted to provide that bird's-eye view of the overall station as well, so don't want to confuse that. You know, we are trying to be cognizant of the area driving community and walkers as well.
Can I ask another question? So on the building, you have what appears to look like windows right there, those? And then in the front, it has, are those doors operational, or is that just decoration?
Yes, those are equipment doors for the equipment that's stored inside. And then the windows are a false window.
Okay. It's too bad you can't have those in the front of the...
So we do actually have, in the open spaces on each end of the front side, we do have the false windows as well. But we're also not opposed to, you know, blending in the doors as well, so that we can kind of hide that.
Yeah. That might be nice.
So are those doors at, say, dock height? Or what's the, it, it appears that the doors aren't at grade level?
They, they are elevated for the, the equipment, that, because the equipment is elevated so that all the control cables can come up into the building from below ground. So those doors are elevated at the level that the equipment is inside the building. I don't have the exact height. I mean, Kyle might be able to answer a little more detail on that.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be able to speak to the exact height. I don't, I don't really want to put a, put something in your mind that's going to be inaccurate, but to Eric's point, yeah, we have power cable that comes in underneath, and that's, and that's the reason for a, for the elevation. And, and again, where the equipment would go into that building is, is at those locations, is at those doors.
You could, I would assume, have some, I'm not asking for an exact height, but some waist-high, knee-high, and obviously, everybody's different heights. There's a variance there, but...
I would estimate that.
The base of the door is going to be, you know, way up there? It, it's, it's a little bit out of context, and having some idea would be helpful.
I would say it's going to be well above waist-high. They are pretty tall. I don't want to misrepresent what's going to be out there in the field. They are...
I mean, the number of stairs?
Correct.
I could figure that out. How many stairs are on these?
Well, that fence should be...
How many steps?
Fence, fences, yes.
Is that a full story?
Seven or eight feet, right, so...
So I think, conceptually, the, the building is elevated so that, and it's open on, on the, the side that you can't see from Empire Boulevard, to provide access for operations and maintenance crews to get in to the building from, from the ground. So, conceptually, the building is elevated so that you can, you know, walk underneath it, or at least, you know, walk in, kind of duck down. So, you know, that's how it was designed intentionally.
So it's access underneath the equipment?
What's that?
Access underneath the equipment?
To access underneath the equipment, correct.
And you have cabling and conduit and so forth in that area that you're walking around?
Yes.
To get to service the equipment?
Correct.
That's right.
The, the true scaling of the actual heights and such is, are things that are sort of next in the detail development stage, that will be available for the preliminary final approvals. But again, this is just sort of a conceptual idea of, of the access points.
Okay. Other comments?
Yeah, I, I have one question. Is there a practical reason why the slope of the gables couldn't be steeper than what you're showing here?
We, we didn't, we didn't entertain that idea. It's certainly something that we, we could, you know, look at the, the pitch of the, the gables, if that's kind of the preferred look. You know, I don't think we're, we're opposed to, to that. We do want to be cognizant of just the, the weight of any roof line that we are putting on there, to make sure that the, the buildings themselves can support the, you know, the extra pitch. So, but we didn't, we haven't looked that detailed into that exercise. This was more so to just get different designs, concepts out there.
To access those doors, you have a, like a flatbed truck back up to it, or pull alongside? Or forklift? What are they there for at that, at that height to, to service things? Especially if it's, I'm looking at two sets of three doors. So it, it leads me to believe that maybe each set of two opens in or out, so you'd have a, what, six-foot-wide by seven-foot-tall open space in three sections? And so your equipment has to be a certain size if you're going to pull it out? But it's six feet above the ground, or seven feet above the ground?
Yeah, operationally, I, I'm not too familiar with the exact equipment that they, they use to, to bring the, the piece, the electrical equipment from the building in and out. But there, our operations crews do have various types of equipment that they would, you know, drive in, whether it's a forklift or a, you know, on a, on a truck. I'm not entirely sure, you know, how they go about doing that. Not necessarily qualified to, to answer that piece, but they do, they do have, have equipment, and, you know, these are, these doors are sort of designed at the height of what that equipment would be.
Okay. Other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. The transformer walls, could those be constructed so they look like the stone that's in the lower part of the building?
So the, the transformer walls are designed specifically with a CMU block to provide, you know, a, a fire rating for the transformers and, you know, in essence of an emergency. The material that is on the exterior of the building is a, a fake stone-type material, so it's not the actual block, like, not a natural stone or an actual block stone. So it's, it's not something that we would look to use for a, a transformer firewall, just from a, a design purpose of what its intended use is.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know, in the architectural review, if the stripes on there make sense?
Matt, if you go back...
Yeah, I think you're asking...
To one of the previous emissions, they did...
We have tan-on-tan fake stone facade, like fake brick on the front. Can you have tan-on-tan instead of gray-and-tan CMU block?
Yeah.
Is that basically what you're asking?
Yeah.
There's no reason why that CMU couldn't be designed to look more closely to the skirt and the main building.
Yeah, just see from the, from the two, well, three structures, they're...
Yeah.
If they were...
Agreed.
Done differently, they would blend in better.
Yeah, I'm, I, I think you've come a fair distance. I'm a little bit... I, I was going to say baffled. It, it surprises me that there's not examples of dozens of different, let's say, architecturally pleasing buildings that conceal this type of equipment that are used throughout the United States or throughout the world. And with, you know, Avangrid, is it Avangrid or Avangrid?
Avangrid, yeah.
Owning Argenee and being based in Spain, I mean, they, there's, the resources for this type of thing, examples are, to me, have to be somewhat boundless. So I'm, one of the things that I'm going to advocate for our architectural consultant looking at is the, these doors being up so high, and, you know, we're looking at a rendering here, and then the real thing is built, and everybody in, driving by or walking by and saying, wow, that's really weird-looking. And I, I'm just wondering what's out there that already exists, other, you know, even beyond the one, the examples that we've brought up and shown, that help these structures really blend in to their surroundings in a way that people don't do a double-take when they, when they drive by or walk by? Does that make sense? As a question?
Yeah, I mean, I can appreciate the comment question. I think we can look at the firewall, as was stated, you know, the firewall for the, for the transformers. I think that there's certainly things we can blend with the lower stone you're seeing in the building compared with the stone of the transformer. I just want to go back to the elevation again and kind of provide why we do that. It's, it's an operational requirement. We have, we have, as we, as I stated, we have cables that come in underneath, and we install some devices there that, that allow us to isolate and, and operate our equipment, essentially, right? And test cables, you know?
Sure.
I think Eric did, did mention, we can look at the colors of those doors as well. The height is a challenge to, to, to change that, but to blend it in better is a, is a fair comment, for sure.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just thinking about structures that are designed to really disguise what they actually do. And, you know, these are obviously doors that, when the average person goes, huh, why are those doors up so high? Who's going to walk out of that thing, you know? And fall and hurt themselves. And I would imagine that whoever is going to service and work in that space has to have some type of clearance and training and so on, so that if the building for the average person walking by, you didn't even see that there were any doors, you know, there were doors, but they didn't look like doors, but anybody who has to go there knows that they're there, they're just disguised as not being doors. And the only reason I'm saying, and this, again, I want to get our architectural consultant to look at it, it's just, okay, how many doors do you see that are seven feet up in the air with no deck in front of them, or steps or something? That's...
Is it considered one-story? Would you consider this one-story, this rendering?
I guess we've approached it as one-story?
One-story.
Yeah, how, how high is it?
I don't know the total height. When you factor, when you factor in the roof, yeah.
You know, the walls before the roof. Obviously, we're, you're showing different options of the roof, so...
Do, do we know, Eric, the height of, of the modular buildings as they are? Do you know that information?
I think when we were kind of looking at this, the conceptual version, as far as the total height of the building, we looked at it as less than 30 feet. In total height. As far as the, the height clearances off the ground for, you know, we'll say that stair balcony section, I, I want to say it was somewhere around six, seven feet, maybe, to the, to the mandor on the side.
Okay.
I think before we ask Chris Lopez to take a look at this, we're gonna need a little more definition, um, from the applicant in terms of elevation markers for the height to the bottom of the door, the top of the door.
Some overall dimensional data.
Just some rudimentary dimensions, so.
To give him some sense of scale.
Yep.
Yeah, in the letter of intent, I was reading, you mentioned three stories when we proposed or whatever the Mount Hope job, I don't know what you guys wanna talk about, but you guys compared it, it would take three stories. So that's my question, is this one story, you know, compared to your third, three stories, I guess, how, like you say, height, how much is, difference is it gonna be, I guess? So maybe you could take a look at that and let us know as long as you're gonna be looking at it. Yeah, in that letter of intent, January 3rd, 2025, you mentioned that. Uh, it would take three stories to fit everything in, I guess. Take a look at that and let us know what this one is, I guess.
Terry, I believe that was in context too, if they were to design or build the Mount Hope one that we had used as, the board had used as a previous example, that to fit the same amount of equipment in that design frame would require the building to be three stories, not that it's-
Well, is that, is that an answer in terms of, geez, the dimensions of the Mount Hope building are X number of feet wide by X number of feet long and to get the equipment here, we'd have to build it three stories high? Uh, just to answer it that way because, you know, you think we want that exact building? Or, uh, you know, and did we misrepresent our intent in, in terms of, hey, that's a nice looking structure and something that looks like that doesn't have to be exactly the same footprint as that, but something that looks like that would be great? And why can't we have that if they have that in the city? Um, yeah, I, you know, I think those are some fair questions to ask.
So I, just in terms of the stories between the two buildings, I, I, I don't wanna, um, you know, get the, the point that, uh, this proposed concept is, you know, a similar setup as the Mount Hope station. Um, this, this building, all the equipment is, is elevated, um, to allow for those cables to come up from below ground. Uh, we did conceal that with the cultured stone, uh, skirting around the side. So from that perspective, we're looking at this building as one story. When we're in that letter, um, comparing it to three stories needed, you know, it would essentially be triple the size of, of this building because at 262, everything is on grade with the ground. There's no elevation there of, of where the equipment is. So, um, yes, the Mount Hope station is, you know, roughly a three story building, but, you know, this, this is a, a one story building, but it's, it's elevated, um, to allow for those cables to come up under, underneath. So, you know, to have something like the Mount Hope station, you would have to, you know, increase the height of this by three times the size, uh, just to, as a point of perspective, I guess.
If that's one story, if this is, is in fact one story-
Yes, yes.
It would be three times.
Yes.
I, I still don't totally understand why that is from a architectural standpoint or concealing or a, uh, what does this, you know, really what we're, we're looking to do is create this sort of fake facade, right, to disguise all the equipment and make it look attractive to everybody going up and down the street. And, um, I, I, not disputing, I get the fact that you, you have the raised equipment and you, you want it under, you know, access underneath, um, but I'm not sure why that would, you, you couldn't do similar architectural treatments and look with this height as, say, the Mount Hope structure with all the same equipment, just the way it is, it's just changing that surrounding building. I'm not sure why it has to be three times the height to do that. Or unless I'm missing something huge, which I could be.
So the, the design of the, the Mount Hope station is a completely indoor station and that's not what we're proposing here. So that means, you know, the transformers are also included in that building and that's how that, that station was designed. Um, you know, that was a, that station was a pilot project for a transmission, uh, station, which was with a much higher voltage. This is a distribution setup, it's a much smaller scale, different, uh, equipment designs. Um, and the, the Mount Hope station has a lot of, you know, operational and maintenance, um, challenges that we've determined from that pilot. So that orientation of that building, the way that it's designed, um, you know, to have all the equipment in, indoors, uh, is, is not feasible or realistic. So we've, we've, um, taken that out of the, the company's portfolio of, of future stations, uh, design. Um, I, I understand you're solely focused on the aesthetics. It's difficult to, uh, you know, come, for us to compare 262, uh, the Mount Hope station with, with this design because we are talking about a fully indoor station at Mount Hope and it's, it's different equipment. Um, so that's, I guess that's what we mean by the, the size. If we were to incorporate that on this station, the footprint just would be too large because we're incorporating in that design all of the transformers, you know, completely inside, um, which then, um, allows for, or creates the need to increase the size of all the equipment because you have to have clearances to ceilings and, you know, walls and things like that. Um, so when we're, we're talking about three times the size, it's, it's simply because of the design for Mount Hope was different than the design that we are proposing here. Um, and that footprint just does not fit on this, this property.
Hey, Jay, aren't you really just asking, like, what the outside of 262 Mount Hope looks like?
Yes.
Like, so it's, I'm looking at it here and it's all brick, like, and so what you're really asking is why can't you use this look on the exterior on the Penfield site that you're proposing?
That's exactly what I'm asking. And I thought, I, I thought I was clear, but I-
I wonder if-
Clearly I'm not. I'm clear as mud.
No, I, I, I think we did convey that, uh, in the sketch letter that we submitted with their, in response to their earlier application. Um, so I, I guess if I can paraphrase, um, we're, uh, we're looking for something that's more closely resembles this type of a facade than what you've presented here in these three views. So, doesn't matter to us what you're doing inside, doesn't matter to us how many doors, uh, you know, you're putting in, you know, we're, we're, we're trying to take advantage of, uh, you know, the board's obligation to, um, uh, if we approve the project, approve something that's going to be reasonably pleasing to the general public in our backyard.
Are we saying that really what we're looking for is the brick on that main building? Would it make any difference if the transformers behind still stayed in that location?
I don't think that makes a difference at all and I, and I think, and I think it would be very easy for them to create a three center enclosure of the transformers using materials that complement or blend with the materials that, that they ultimately choose and that we ultimately approve for the main, the main building here.
So you aren't putting the, the two transformers inside the main structure?
No, I, I think they've, I mean, I think they've made a good case for why the transformers need to be where they are.
Right.
That's, that's a legit, for sure. Gentleman reasons.
I mean, just to remember, one thing you mentioned last time is this is also the, kind of the gateway of Penfield on Empire Boulevard too, so that's, you know, part of their concern, I think.
Part of the reason why we're, and I'm sure in your mind, being so difficult.
In terms of the, the, the building materials of the, the facade, um, you know, as Mary stated when we, you know, originally came here on this parcel, um, you know, it was, it was just the, the metal clad siding on the building. So, um, you, we did work with some architectural consultants to come up with more natural type materials. So this is, this is a, a fake wood type look and that's, I mean, that's just one, one option that, you know, we, there's, there's plenty of different faux natural material looks. And this was just one that we happened to pick out for the, the sense of a conceptual design. If, if this isn't the, the building material type that the, the board is looking for and and brick is a more preferred option, we, we do have the ability that we can, and we can look into, um, you know, changing out the, the building material, um, on the, this facade to be, you know, more of a brick type, um, building material or, or, you know, get the feedback from the architectural consultant, um, from Penfield on, you know, what, uh, building material facade might, might be a, a good solution. I think for the purposes of what the options that we presented here, so that we are not kind of overwhelming with, uh, design decisions, we, we kept just the one facade material throughout the three different options with our main focus and objective to, uh, sort of get a sense of which design look or roof line option, we'll say, um, you know, might be more, uh, welcoming to, to the board and, and to the, to the community. Um, you know, like I said before, we, we do certainly welcome the feedback from the architectural consultant in kind of helping us, you know, make, make these decisions to, to move forward and, um, you know, we, we, we certainly can look at upgrading the materials from the, the fake wood look if that's, if that's where the, you know, the issue lies.
I think it's just really hard to tell what that looks like without having a sample of it.
Sure.
You know, it kind of just looks like cardboard to me from here, you know?
No, I, I fully understand that and, you know, unfortunately, uh, because this is, you know, conceptual-
Right.
Uh, you know, we don't have the, the materials here. Precon, yes, yes, preconception. Uh, we don't have, you know, the materials here that's, you know, once we sort of had a, uh, a look, kind of a route to go to, um, you know, all those will be kind of worked out in the preliminary final for site plan approval of what the material actually is going to be.
Mm-hmm.
But, you know, we can, we can certainly look to, to upgrade those if, if that's the issue, but, you know, working with the architectural consultant moving forward.
Okay.
You mentioned here in the, the letter of intent, the effect on the ratepayers economy. So what is, is there any positive, you know, for the rate, ratepayers, your customers that we're not aware of that you mentioned in here, paragraph two of the letter of intent? Besides the aesthetics in the area?
The benefit of building the station, you mean?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Uh, yeah, right, so existing station has one transformer, Station 55 as it, as it is right now. Um, and with, with this, we're, we're gonna have dual transformers, right? So one will back up the other in the event of a failure or some sort of emergency or even for maintenance. It makes it a lot easier, um, for us. Um, the other thing that's important inside these buildings, um, is, is switchgear that can, you know, it, from a, from a reliability perspective, there's gonna be, there's gonna be quite a bit of benefit. Um, automatic throwovers and stuff like that that we, that we don't have today. Um, from, from a technological standpoint, that this is a far superior substation than what exists right now. It, not to mention, you know, there will be, um, uh, some added, I don't wanna, we're not adding a, some immense amount of capacity here, uh, but, but there, there, this does allow for future growth, um, when the substation, when the new substation is complete.
It doesn't affect the people that live in that area, the rates or anything like that?
No.
No.
No, it gives them, it gives them added reliability benefits that I just mentioned.
And now, my other question was variances. What do we, uh, did you guys come up with for how many variances? If this is approved?
I think we have pretty consistently, um, indicated that we'll probably need, um, lock coverage variance, um, potentially setback, uh, from the front side and rear, fence height, um, and, uh, the buffer boundary line between the two districts.
Six. I think I came up with six.
Could be. Yeah, I mean, we, we have not prepared a preliminary design yet, so.
Right now?
Yep, and certainly we would try to keep-
That's what you're looking at?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Would anyone in the audience like to comment on this, uh, sketch plan concept? No, let me just quick check and see if there's any, uh, calls that have come in or electronic submissions. Right now we have no calls. Uh, just for, uh, the millions of you watching at home and around the world, um, you can call in at 585, actually, one is our country code.
Are they adding sidewalks? Is that a, are there sidewalks there now or are they adding them?
Those are added. There's no sidewalks there currently.
Okay.
And I guess I would mention too, uh, from the last time we were here, um, we did actually move the fence in, um, by recommendation from, from the board to allow for the landscaping to be installed within the property and not, not on the road right of way.
Okay. Thank you. So the angled sections of that fence, is that really just gates?
It's just the gates, yes.
Right now that are depicted as being partly open?
Yes.
Okay. I think that's all the questions I have. Anybody else on the board? Thank you for your presentation. We will, uh, we'll get a letter out. I don't know if we, we will definitely want our architectural consultant to, uh, review it and is probably a, a big part of our letter to you will be some dimensional information so that he's equipped to, to give, uh, recommendations.
Can I just ask, how would that work in, um, you know, getting the feedback from the architectural consultant? Is that something that, that we would sit down with the, with the consultant or are we providing just the documents to for, say, an internal review and then that consultant will, will provide us written feedback, um, that we can take into account? How, how exactly would that go about?
At a sketch plan level, I, typically, when we ask for that type of review, all the plans go to the consultant. They write up an opinion based on, uh, the area, the use, how they feel it fits or doesn't fit into the, on the site, in the neighborhood, all of those things. And the, the, the comments that they provide are directed to us, but they're generally shared with you.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, yes, I just said it's in- Yes, yes, I just didn't know if it was an in-person discussion, or, you know, more of a, an internal review?
Typically more of a written.
Okay.
Back and forth.
Okay.
I'm, I think that, having him come in at a sketch plan level may be a bit ambiguous for him. I, I don't, I don't know, but.
No, we, we certainly do appreciate it, because, you know, any, any feedback that we can get from the consultant certainly helps us in the, you know, the further design to get us to, you know, a preliminary final site plan.
Yes, yeah, I mean, I'm a little bit surprised at some of the, I mean, doesn't Lavelle have architects and people that review this stuff, too?
They do, yes.
But they haven't looked at it, or have?
No, they, they have provided input into the design, but, you know, we certainly would appreciate the, the town's direct consultant's input as well.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No other questions, or do you have a question?
Nope.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Doug?
All righty. All right, we only have one public hearing tonight. Public hearing number one, Nixon Peabody LLP, 1300 Clinton Square, Rochester, New York, 14604. On behalf of Bell Atlantic Mobile Systems LLC, doing business as Verizon Wireless, requests under chapter 250, article 12-12.2, and article 13-13.2 of the Code of the Town of Penfield for preliminary and final site plan approval and conditional use permit for the construction of a 125-foot monopole wireless communication facility with fence, compound, and associated exterior cabinets and other site improvements at 1391 Salt Road, Webster, New York, 14580. The properties now are formerly owned by Northeast Joint Fire District and Zoned Rural Agricultural, RA2. Application 25P-0002, SBL 095.04-1-43.
Good evening, members of the board. Jared Lusk with Nixon Peabody, representing Verizon Wireless. With, with me, if you recall from our last application, Nico Facy is Verizon's real estate consultant, and to my immediate left is Mike Crosby, who is the Verizon's RF Design Engineer for Monroe County, who lives relatively close to the proposed site, so this is in, close to his neighborhood. As you know, we, we applied on December 31st of last year to, for the approvals necessary to construct and operate 125-foot wireless telecommunications facility to be located at the Northeast Joint Fire District facility located at 1391 Salt Road. The need for the project is set forth in tab G of the application. Again, 125-foot tower, that is consistent with the height of the, at the Penfield downtown site behind that fire station, and, and consistent with the height that this board approved relatively recently at the ambulance base on Jackson Road. Again, this parcel, this one's a little different. There's an existing 70-foot tower constructed behind the tower, excuse me, behind the fire station, currently used to, to host the fire department's communications antenna facility. Verizon is proposing to replace, essentially called drop and swap, replace that 70-foot tower with 125-foot tower, reinstall the antennas, the fire district antennas on the, that facility, as well as Verizon's antennas. The need for the property is, is outlined in tab G of the application. Doug, I don't know if you have that immediately available. I know you've seen these coverage plots before. Just a few key points here. There's two needs for the project, obviously, not dissimilar to what you've heard in prior applications. There's direct coverage in this portion of the town, we can talk about that, that there's three, three towers currently, or three sites currently serving the facility, the South Webster site, the West Walworth, and East Penfield. All of them, we have provided the, the traffic graphs. I'll, I'll point you to the direction. Page six of the, of the, of this package starts a series, and again, of the usage graphs. Remember, we, they're above, several of these towers are above the traffic capacity, so again, there's too much traffic on those surrounding sites, and, again, there's a direct coverage problem in this area. If you, Doug, if you can keep proceeding forward, you'll see the existing coverage plots. Keep going, I can give you the, keep going, keep going, keep going, keep going. Lots of traffic graphs, keep going. All right, so these, this, we can stop here. This is on page, I take my glasses off so I can read, and then I have to put them back on, so, it's page 20, just so I don't waste your time. The existing sites, as you've seen in so many other presentations, and I'm taking for granted that you've seen this, the three surrounding sites that we told you about, the South Webster, East Penfield, and West Walworth, are each represented by the color. You can see, again, like we've discussed in previous applications, it's not, as brilliant as, as Mike is, it's not rocket science to figure out why we're putting a tower right smack dab in between those three sites. Those three, those three towers are, are overloaded. We've got the, the ACL heights listed. As you can see, it's 140, 228, and the upper corner that you see is with a West Walworth, East Penfield, Alpha and Beta, that's 99 feet. So you can see the heights of the towers surrounding. Again, you can see the next, the next plot, next page, you can see we're adding our coverage from this proposal. Again, smack dab in the middle of it, you can see the coverage, all the, all the traffic that was, that was previously being handled by the surrounding sites that's in the green will now be handled by the, the new site. Again, going to the next page, page 22, you can see, this does a couple of things, the Penfield Highway Site that we just got approved, we've turned that on, in theory here, it's green, it's been approved, it's not, obviously, not yet constructed, but you can see, this is sort of the upper corner of town, everything is green, this is yellow, and, and as we talked about, this coverage is barely not reliable in, in, in building coverage, and the brown that you see is barely connecting.
So if I could, I'm sorry to interrupt, but on these maps, the green represents good coverage?
Reliable coverage.
Reliable coverage. The yellow is not as good, and the pinkish-orange?
Orange is.
Is really?
You're outside, hopefully you're getting a signal.
Terrible, okay.
There's some, some coverage, but just you're outside and hoping you've got cover. Am I saying that, Michael, correctly?
Yeah, and I, I think one of the important things to keep in mind here is that we, there's, we operate many different bands of spectrum, there are different frequencies. What we're looking at here is the most favorable for coverage. These plots represent our more limited capacity layers, so, these cover, these, these layers that we're showing here cover a long ways, but they don't have a lot of capacity capability. They be, and that's where the traffic slides come into play, because we're able to show, these layers are overloaded. They cannot support the traffic in that area. And then the next slides that Jared will flip to in a minute here, will show the higher frequencies, which have much wider bandwidth, much greater capability for us to serve the traffic that we have in the area. That's even more, that's even more limited in its coverage. So while there's some coverage in this area from the low frequencies, which is good, it's overloaded, which is bad. The mid-bands, the, sorry.
Would I be, I'm dangerously close to making myself look like a total idiot, but would this be somewhat comparable to what I understand with my home router? I have a 2.4 gigahertz band and a 5.8 gigahertz band. 2.4 gigahertz band goes farther, but isn't quite as fast as?
Spot on.
The 5.8.
Spot on.
5.8, hey, that's my router, here's my device, got great coverage, it's super fast, and if I'm sitting where you are, or in the back of the room or something, I'm potentially better off with a 2.4. Is it same kind of concept?
The concept is identical. The frequencies are similar, but a little bit different, but yes, you're spot on with that analysis and analogy, yes.
Okay.
So, so as we get into the next set of slides, would I, just keep that in mind, so that higher frequency, much more capable, and just as needed for us to be able to serve the community, because these layers, where they exist together, are aggregated together to provide a composite service for the customers. So they're not used necessarily, and they can be, but they're not anymore, in the old days, they were used independently. Today, the modern technology, they're aggregated together so that they can provide a combined or cumulative service. So, Jared, did you want to go to the next couple of slides?
I know what it felt like, the early days of Apple right here, watching this camera shoot. The...
My next question's going to be about a commercial I saw on the Super Bowl.
Oh, yes, yes. So if you go, move to the next slide.
But we won't go there.
Yeah. Yes, so, the mid-band coverage that you see is, again, we're continuing to show you the, the difference in the coverage. When you get to slide 26, this is, why don't, Mike, why don't you explain it?
Yeah, so this is, this is where, in order for us to solve, so, so while we have some low-band service in the area, and that's 700 and 850 megahertz versus the 2.4 gigahertz that you had used in your analogy, while we have some coverage on those earlier slides, that's overloaded. In order to solve that, we need to be able to resolve this gap here, which is the mid-band service gap. This, these frequencies range from just below 2 gigahertz to about 3.5 gigahertz, so we have several different very wide bandwidths of service available that, you know, quite frankly, is, you know, transformational for service in the area to, for that part of the community. Obviously, that, that whole northeast corner of the town, and extending into that southeast portion of Webster, and northwest Walworth, will all benefit from the site's ability to resolve that gap.
I mean, it's, is this the same type of scale as those other ones, where maybe the white is almost nonexistent, or?
White, yeah, white is very bad.
Worse than the orange?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so that, so when we get into that orange color, the definitions we have are on an earlier slide, I think slide 12 or 14 in that area, but the, the definition that we have in that orange area is that it's rural highway coverage, subject to seasonality, and fading, and gaps in service, and so that's considered unreliable, so that doesn't fall into that adequate and reliable service that we're required to provide in the area.
Okay.
Should we go to the next slide, just show what this provides? So, and so that's the, that's the justification, it's more technical than I can usually explain, and, again, but the need here is primarily driven by the capacity of the surrounding sites, et cetera. The search ring, the search ring for the site is outlined in exhibit H, and as you know, your first choice of, in your wireless code is for us to, in this, this search area, again, as we've discussed multiple times before this board, is really a, a general vicinity that Nico and his team will be granted by Mike and his team to go out and try to find something. Your first order of magnitude, or first order of business in your code for, in terms of priority, is trying to find something that's, you can co-locate on. And obviously, we reviewed the tower at 70 feet, and it's, it's not tall enough to be able to, to get, to, to provide the coverage. And so your second, your second priority in your hierarchy is to put a, a tower on government property. I'd like to say that this is sort of a higher, a hybrid between those two, where we're replacing one tower with a taller one on government property. We're essentially co-locating two sets of antennas on a new tower that's 125 feet tall. So in terms of, it is properly zoned, in terms of towers are permitted in the zone. We did approach, approach the Northeast Joint Fire District in terms of trying to find a location on the, on their property, whether it be where their existing tower was, or another tower, or location, for a, a number of reasons. I think the, it was, it was preferred for us to, to, to drop and swap, replace it exactly where it is, it would cause a little bit of a reconfiguration of the compound, et cetera, but again, with the plan to, 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 again, host both sets of antennas on the same site. I know we've reviewed the site plans for these compounds before, there's nothing particularly unique about this, except the compound is not right at the base of the tower. Again, it's right, it gets across the parking lot. One of your engineering comments regarding the project was, is that an open cut in the, in the parking lot, or is it a directional bore? It's going to be an open cut. That's been discussed, as we understand it, the fire district is planning to resurface the parking lot, they're well aware of this, we're going to do this, and then they're going to resurface their parking lot, we're going to coordinate that. Again, you, the comments on the plan, the, the typical PRC review comments were received, we, they were, I want to say, all virtual, all technical in nature regarding signature things like that. They did ask about the fence. We had proposed a barbed wire fence, we have in the, in the latest iteration of the drawings, it's a six-inch, what's the, oh my lord, a six-inch, or six-foot fence with the privacy slats, and mirroring exactly what's there. It's a new fence, but it's a chain-link fence, mirroring exactly what's there, no longer barbed wire fence. Again, as we've discussed, there was a, they asked for some greens, green space calculations, we provided that, signature lines, and the fence, there was a reference to an easement, they asked us to locate the Heim and easement from 1962. Our surveyors have placed that, it's, based on their review, that easement is entirely located within the Salt Road right of way, so it's not located on the property, but it's referenced. They asked for some additional contours on the, on the, for, for drainage away from the compound. Again, that additional drainage was provided, and again, fencing and signature lines. So from a, from a site plan perspective, I'm confident that the revised drawings respond to those comments, they just received them today, so again, fine to, to have those reviews, but does the board have any questions about the project that's pretty straightforward?
Kelly, do you want to start?
Sure. Yeah, it does seem pretty straightforward, but just for clarification, so the 70-foot pole that's currently in existence, there's no possibility of co-locating because of the signal strength, or, or what?
So that's a combination of, the tower itself is physically too low to provide the elevation needed for the antennas to fill in the gap in coverage, and the second thing is, just out of experience, that tower's nowhere near structurally capable of being able to hold the equipment that we would need to place on it. It would fail a structural analysis. I haven't done that, we haven't hired somebody to do that, it's just, that would be an obvious thing to us, so that, those would be the two main reasons.
Okay.
And it's not, it's not upgradable, it's not like there's something that we can do to that to, you know, make that one be the height and structure stability that we need.
Gotcha. Okay. Yeah, I don't really have too much of anything else.
Would the plan be to erect the second tower, co-late, locate all this equipment on that, and then take this one down?
I believe that that's the plan, I don't know, Nico, if you've coordinated that with the fire department?
Yeah, so the plan would be to take the, the existing one down first, and then build, and then put the equipment back on.
Would that create an issue for the fire department during that period of time, from a communication and life safety standpoint?
Yeah, they haven't told us that yet, but we, they told us that they do want to coordinate to do it all at the same time, so they haven't mentioned anything about whether loss and service of, of what they do now, so no, they haven't said that.
Typically, how, how, I mean, is it all, hey, we'll take this one down at 7:00 in the morning, and by 8:30, the new one's up and running? Or is it, you know, we start deconstructing this one on Monday, it's down by Wednesday, and by, you know, two months later, the other one's up?
Yeah, it would, it would definitely take some time, there's the civil work that's involved between site preparation, being able to dig and pour the foundation that's necessary, you know, concrete, that's going to take some time, a lot of steel work involved there, and then erecting the towers, you know, I don't know the exact time, because it's a little bit out of my scope, but, you know, it's, I would say that it's definitely something that Nico would, will be coordinating carefully with the fire department to make sure that, you know, that the, the project as proposed is not going to cause detrimental issue.
Emergency services. Any other questions from the board?
I have one question. Is, is the tech? Is, is the technology and the need for services such that what we're being asked to approve is going to be obsolete in a few years? I mean, is, either of you guys have any feel for where this is headed?
I, I've actually had this question asked before. In fact, it was one of the first things that was asked of me when I started in this business 30 years ago. Satellite technology was just a brand-new thing at that time, there was a company called MRSat, and I was in the town of Clay, the town supervisor asked me, he said, you know, are you keeping up with this technology? There's, you know, satellite is going to replace all your towers in a couple of years, from what I understand. And I said, geez, you know, I just got out of school with a telecommunications degree, kind of was planning on doing this for a while, you know, so hopefully, you know, I'm in a good spot here. And I said, as far as I know, it should be around for a while. So, I would say, based on the last 30 years, I don't think you're going to see that displaced, and one of the reasons why is even though satellite can complement terrestrial-based services, it can't replace it, because the satellite services are very limited because of the, you're talking about, you know, 100, 200 miles up in, up in the sky, so it's a very weak signal by the time, even though there's no obstructions, it's still a very weak signal, and doesn't do well penetrating inside buildings and, and other structures like that, so.
Let me rephrase that, so we're going from a 70-foot tower to 125-foot tower. In five years, are we going to need a 150-foot tower to, to provide the, to meet the gap that, that is realized in the near future?
I will say that in the past, we've done sites that worked really well for our older technologies, and that was all we had at the time, and there's been challenges with those, trying to upgrade those. As we acquire or purchase additional bands of spectrum from the FCC, the spectrum seems to keep getting higher. The good news is, is I think that we've covered such a broad spectrum, no pun intended, that we have, we have that variety in our portfolio now, and the sites that we're designing today are designed specifically for that wide breadth of spectrum, to be able to adapt to those higher frequencies. So, this is, this is, you know, as far as I'm concerned, is very modern and very appropriate to last into the future for a long time, and allow for additional carriers to come in and co-locate on it as well.
All right, fair enough.
It's going to look just like the one in Penfield, fire station at Penfield?
Yes, one foot difference in the height of the antennas between the two, but otherwise the same, for the tower.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, one question. The equipment pad, what's the fencing around that?
That's the chain, the six-foot chain-link fence with the privacy slats in it.
Oh, so that will have privacy slats, so that will kind of match what is going to be at the base of the tower?
Correct, that's, that's the intent, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any other questions? Okay, we have one person in the audience that would like to speak. Please forgive me if I don't pronounce your name right, but Ricky, is it Trotier?
Close enough.
Trotter? Trotter, tried?
Close enough.
I think I butchered it. Can you say it?
Ricky Trotier.
Trotier, okay.
Or Trotier, I guess is how they would, I am a-
If you could give us your address, that would be great for-
It's 1403 Salt Road.
Thanks.
Which is approximately 300 yards from the firehouse. This was my father-in-law's property, Henry Hyman, where the firehouse is built now. We built our house just down the road on the family farm. You'll have to excuse me if I run out of breath, I'm just getting through a bout of pneumonia here, so.
Take your time.
I've been a 40-plus-year member of the fire department, but I'm not here in that capacity tonight. However, I'm not their IT person or a technical guy, but I am aware that there is a huge need for this, not only the fire department, but the neighborhood as well, so I am very positive about this. My biggest concern, as Kelly said, presently, it's 75 feet tall, the existing tower that we have, and we're going to 125 feet. I know that there was a drawing, I don't know if you can show that, what the new tower's going to look like compared to the existing one? There we go. Is that going to be out of proportion? I don't know, we'll get used to it, I guess, down the road. It just seems a little bit, this is a single-story building, the one in the Village Firehouse, I think, is 130 feet tall, but that's a two-and-a-half-story building, so it's more in perspective, I guess, where, you know, that obviously looks a little bit out of But like I said, I'm sure we'll get used to it. I am not opposed to this, there is a huge need for it. As they mentioned, I'm walking around my house like this, and I have Verizon, trying to call over here to make an appointment to pay my taxes, or whatever it happens to be. So, there is definitely a need for this. My biggest concern is, wow, look at the size of that thing.
Yeah, the mental adjustment to-
Yeah.
The visual impact.
And then the other, one of the other ones, where they're going to keep the equipment, which is adjacent to our new extrication pad, just to make sure that the slats in the fencing is the same as what we have, so that, you know-
Matches.
You know, we don't need to have a, ours is brown and Verizon red, adjacent to it, you know? If I come out of my garage, I'm not going to be happy with that, I'll tell you, so I would hope that the board would make sure that all this is done the way we would like to have it.
We're happy to match it if there's a color code or whatever, that you're familiar with the same, we're happy to match it to the extent that-
My wife will be over there painting it if it's not, so, that's all I have, so, but I would like the board to, you know, really help these people to get this done. From a fire department standpoint, we need it, from people in the neighborhood, we need it. So, from that standpoint, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else in the audience like to comment on this application? Okay, let's see if we have any calls. It doesn't look like we have any electronic submissions or calls. Any other comments from the board? Jared is, I don't want to give you a big head, I was going to say, as always, a good quality presentation, but thank you. If you have any final comments, love to hear them, otherwise, we'll call the hearing closed.
I'm all good, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, so, we need to start a sketch letter for R G and E.
For R G and E.
So, is it, is it just me? Or, I mean, I think that we've been clear-
You asked them last time, why can't they make it be like that building? And then you asked them again today.
I don't, I don't even need it to be just like that building. Looking for someone with creativity, you know, you go to Disney World or something, I don't, and you walk past things that you have no idea, all the mechanical stuff that's inside that, they just, wow, that's a cool palace, or whatever, or, you know, old shack, or, you know, something that's-
[inaudible]
Are they, are they being told, hey, don't, don't do anything more for this, just wear them down? Or, you know, what, what's happening?
I'm sure cost is a, I'm sure cost is a consideration as part of it. As we think of the sketch letter, though, would it be beneficial to either give them guidance on specific materials the board is interested in, or request that they provide a list of alternative materials that they have available in their portfolio?
I don't even know if we're there yet.
Well, listen, I, I don't think this board starts setting this precedent where we tell people-
What the building should look like?
Yeah, you know, that's, that's really not what we're here for. I, I think if, if perhaps we didn't convey with sufficient clarity in the earlier sketch letter what we were looking for, then perhaps we could be a little more descriptive, and you were, you were very kind in how you were, how you were stating it, but, you know, I, I think the message needs to be diplomatically, that we're not very happy with what they've brought us, and we understand that they have some, some limitations, and they're trying to get this facade and this roofline to work around their, their pragmatic needs, if you will, but, you know.
Well, not just the roofline, the, the entire structure. I, I understand why they want the footprint and transformers mounted where they are and so on, but-
They can do everything they want.
We should be able to get a disguised structure that, that makes it, that driving by, you would never know. I mean, we have these things in town that, you know, the one that went bad on Plank Road, you know, before they, thing went bad, you'd never know, you'd think it's a house.
Yeah.
I'm not, in, it, it almost seems as if they're receiving the comment as, well, you want exactly that, and if we went, did the, exactly, that'd have to be three stories high, no, that's not what we're saying, and I don't know why, what are we saying wrong? That it's not conveying that-
Well, maybe, maybe, Chris-
The right intent.
Maybe Chris can, can better assess what we're looking for, what our design guideline, our local design guidelines provide for, our factors for consideration, and, and give them some better guidance that they can give to Labella and move, move from there.
Do you agree with that?
Absolutely.
So, but I, I do think we need to, to tell them that there, there needs to be some scale that lends proportion, not just to the building, but, you know, the height of the fence and the distance from the fence to the, to the-
Sure.
To the facade, and, you know, the elevation from grade to the bottom of these doors and the top of the doors, and-
Right.
There, there needs to be some proportion there that-
Yes, they didn't submit it as part of this application, mostly because this, the conceptual site layout hasn't changed, so they didn't submit anything with that. It's something that we could provide that, along with any documentation they provide for scale.
Maybe they can go from pre-concept to-
Concept.
Concept.
I, yeah, I think it's mostly wording on it, their conceptual renderings. Is there additional detail that we could provide to them to give them guidance on what direction to go in? Do you want them to submit this iteration to Chris, or have us submit this iteration, along with like the site, conceptual site plan, to Chris for review, or do you want them to potentially alter it? I mean, now that they've gotten feedback from the board at the sketch hearing here, to make a revision based on the comments that were received on potentially different facade materials? They did say that there was a way they could try to blend the doors into the existing, so they're less noticeable. Have them come back with something, then submit that one, or?
I think that, you know, I agree with Jim that we shouldn't be responsible for designing, I'm not an architect, I mean, I, there are things, I drive by and say, wow, that's a nice-looking building, but I don't think that I'm equipped to design that. And, you know, their firm, both the firms, you know, their engineering firm and the utility are, you know, certainly represent themselves as world-class, so this doesn't strike me as what they should expect of their own standards. And that's all, I guess, all I'm asking is, you know-
Class it out with that.
Yeah, you know, give us some creativity, like, come in and wow us.
But, but to Doug's point, whether they want to take the feedback that they got from this board tonight and create some new renderings with new materials and new colors and new rooflines, and, and have that be the basis for submission to our consultant, or they just want to provide some scale and dimension to these plans and get feedback on that, that's up to them, you know?
Okay. Typically, we've done, when we've provided documentation to the consultant for their review, it's usually come as part of an application. Are you guys comfortable with it being outside of an application's scope? So that we provide the sketch letter with our feedback here that they need to provide scale proportions, take a look at alternative materials that they suggested they had, whether it was brick or that faux wood paneling or something like that, and submit it to the planning department, and that'll be submitted to the consultant for the review, and it's occurring outside of the scope of, of an active application. Typically, we've done the-
Limiting the sketch letter to saying, consider alternate materials, that's, hey, we're cool with that, just make it blue instead of brown, or, and, and I'm not saying that, I'm, I, they've made progress, without question, but instead of, you know, going up the ladder a quarter of an inch at a time, they could have gone like 10 feet at a time, and I don't know why they haven't. That's my opinion on this. And I'm, how many more sketch plans do we have to, a quarter inch at a time? Am I the only one that thinks this?
No, I think when, when you drive down Empire, you should see that building and not think it's a warehouse, think that it's something that fits in the area, like an office building, or something nice retail, something that has the look of it.
We, we told them in their original presentation that the building was too utilitarian. I use those words. And then AJ told them that we were looking for something that blended in with the community.
Yeah.
They've been before enough boards over the years with enough projects that they understand what that means, so maybe, maybe they're calling this pre-concept because they're still in the process of developing the, the guts to the building and, and, you know, the electrical transmission and distribution needs for the facility, and they haven't really gotten further down the road with the enclosure.
They could share that.
They could, yep. But I think, I think you know what we're looking for in, in the language.
Yep, I'll do my best to craft something, I'll provide it to the board for, for your review prior to sending it out to the applicant.
Okay. Can somebody move to draft a sketch letter?
So moved.
Now, second?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken? Aiken, aye. Burton?
Burton, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Okay, cell tower. Anything that would prevent preparation of an approval resolution at this point for consideration at the next, are we waiting? What are we waiting? Any?
We're waiting, we're waiting for the ZBA-
They have the meeting in the-
They have to be with the ZBA next week.
So-
For the variances.
We could get something started for-
We could table it pending the outcome of the zoning board meeting, completing SEACER, and drafting out an approval resolution.
Yeah, any-
Steph doesn't have any concerns, they provided responses today, but we reviewed it, and I don't see any, it's all technical in nature, so it could be handled in pre-milear when that happens.
Okay. Any red flag concerns, deal- Okay, any red flag concerns, steel breaker things from you guys? Okay, so we can get that started, and then hopefully, we can get that taken care of at the work session in two weeks.
So motion table pending the zoning board meeting February 20th. Did I say that loud enough?
We have a second?
Tidings, second.
Everybody's in the minutes.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken? Aiken, aye. Burton?
Burton, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
All right, do we have any more business?
That's all I have for you tonight.
All right, thank you everyone for coming, and we will adjourn.